Call the annual meeting of the Board of Commissioners for September seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-four to order. We will open the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance and the invocation led by Margie Walls. All rise, please.
Heavenly Father, thank you for your loving kindness, your mercy, and your grace. Lord, tonight we seek your direction and guidance for our lives and for the decisions we will be making. We lift our community and ask for healing of the divisions of people in this land. Guide us to live and walk in your image. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Madam Clerk, could you call the rule?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Baer.
Present.
Commissioner Walls.
Present.
Commissioner Kennedy.
Here.
Commissioner Duckham.
Here.
Commissioner Polesky.
Here.
Commissioner Willis.
Here.
Commissioner Williams.
Present.
Commissioner Snell.
Here.
Chairman Shatwell.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. We have no awards and recognition to come before the board. We have communications and petitions. Excuse me. We have approval of the agenda. Entertained a motion? Moved by Snell, supported by...
Baer.
Baer. Any questions to the agenda? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Duly carried. We have no awards and recognition to come before the board. We have communications and petitions, and at this time, Vice Chairman Corey Kennedy will verbally read a communication to the Board of Commissioners. Commissioner Kennedy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Tonight, I'm going to address the elephant in the room here, probably for what a lot of the individuals out in the public are here for. It's about the public safety millage proposal that's coming up Tuesday, November fifth, two thousand and twenty-four, the importance of it, the implications of what can occur, and where this board's stance is on things. There's a lot of misinformation going all over the community, and I want to clarify things. So first and foremost, what everybody here should know is there is no defund the police movement on this board or in our administration. We support law enforcement in Jackson County one hundred percent. We support our sheriff, and we support our deputies. Teamwork and unity is what's needed now more than ever. Over the past eight years, the Sheriff's Department has streamlined operations when needed to, to reduce overall costs, and has worked within the county's budgetary process. Over the past six years, this board has given every request that the Sheriff's Department has brought forth to it, every request since I've been on this board. So I think actions often speak louder than words, and our actions have supported our police department. Secondly, this is not a Sheriff's Department versus the county issue. This is a fiscal reality issue that we're facing. Here are the facts. The previous twenty-year jail millage that we all paid of point five mils funded the building of the Chantor Road facility at that time, along with the operations of that facility. That millage has now expired, along with all funds that were collected with it. So common sense tells us, if we don't have those funds, we have to either raise those funds again, or we have to cut those funds from somewhere else. There's been allegations that no planning was done. That couldn't be farther from the truth. We tried to address the aging infrastructure issues out at Wesley Street on two separate occasions. After the first failed attempt, we formed an ad hoc committee. We brought in experts. We did studies. We adjusted that millage request, and both of those millage requests, the operations, the continued operations costs were in it. Unfortunately, the public rejected it. They're not willing to foot the bill of a new jail facility, and so we have to respect those wishes when the voters turn it down. What's the new millage request? The new millage request is a point two-five request. It's the portion of the expired millage that paid for the operations costs out at the Chantor Road facility. It's for ten years, and it will raise between one point two-five and one point five million dollars a year. It adjusts for inflation and anticipated labor cost increases over the course of that ten years. It's a responsible request, and the actual request is a reduction from the twenty-year millage that has expired. What's the cost to the average homeowner? The cost of a point two-five millage to someone that purchased a home for a hundred thousand dollars is twelve dollars and fifty cents a year. The cost to someone that purchased a two-hundred-thousand-dollar home is twenty-five dollars a year. I feel that asked cost is well worth the return on investment, to what it would provide the community. If this millage proposal does not pass, there is no more time to go forward with any other plan, and this board up here will be tasked with cutting one point two-five to one point five million dollars a year from our general fund budget. It's important to note that departments like the Jackson County Department of Transportation, Lifeways, Parks, Fair, Animal Control, all have their own sources of funding. They do not receive any general fund dollars as it stands, and thus, they can't be cut from. So I've seen all kinds of ideas, and I love ideas from the public, but let's just be clear at what can't be cut. We can't cut from road projects. We can't cut from federally grant-funded roundabout projects. We can't cut mental health services. We can't close parks. Any funds saved from those could not go into the general fund budget because those departments don't receive any general fund money. It was cut from their budgets a long time ago. In addition, there's several departments in the general fund budget that have state mandated amounts, and they can't be touched. This would include departments like the Health Department, Public Defender's Office, Prosecutor's Office, since it's had a grant come in, Child Care Youth Center, and Child Welfare. I'm going to refer everyone to a graph that Commissioner Polesky had blown up for his township meeting. I feel it shows the situation we're in very clearly. After you take into all account and to everything I just said, I implore you to now look at this. Look at the departments that are left. Look at their funding levels, and realize the situation that we're in. When looking at the graph, all the departments that could be cut already have been over the past decade or so. For example, last year, we cut four hundred thousand dollars out of the courts. MSU Extension, we cut a hundred thousand from a year or two ago. A few years ago, we cut a half a million dollars out of the Health Department, et cetera, and as a result, it would be difficult to find the significant amount of money that is needed to balance the budget should this millage fail. The bottom line on the bar graph is the Sheriff's Department budget, and it totals eleven million, nine hundred and fifty-five thousand, eight hundred and fifty-six dollars. We believe public safety is a vital need for Jackson County residents, and that is exactly why this department receives the most general fund dollars by a significant proportion. The next closest budget line item are the courts at three point four-nine million dollars. The rest are significantly lower, with many running at the state minimum mandate already. If tasked to do so, the Jackson County Board of Commissioners will make the necessary cuts, and every cut would have an impact on services provided to the public. While we would certainly attempt to spread the cuts across departments the best we can, anyone that looks at this general fund budget from a realistic point of view will see there is no feasible way to make a one point two-five to one point five million dollars a year budget cut from the general fund budget without affecting the sheriff's budget to some extent. This is especially true when you consider that the lost revenue source came from the expired jail millage that went a hundred percent to the sheriff's line item, budget item. Now is not the time to point fingers, cast blame, or make insults. Now is the time to come together, understand the situation we face from a factual context, and come up with a viable solution. This operations millage request will restore what Jackson County had in place for twenty years and keep the sheriff's staffing level at where it is currently at. That is what we need to continue making public safety a priority throughout the community. We all need, and we all want, a secure Jackson County, and we need a strong and properly staffed Sheriff's Department to do so. I urge everyone to come together and get the facts out there to the public in a polite and respectful manner about this millage request. Thank you. That's all, Mr. Chair.
We have no special orders or public hearings. We've arrived at public comment. Public comment guidelines. Each individual will state their name and have three minutes to address the board. You may only address the board once under this public comment opportunity. You may not yield your time to others. Board members will not debate or answer questions at this time. Public comment is open.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Jackson County Sheriff Gary Shute. I'm here to speak about the possible impact of the jail millage failing. If it fails, I've been told to prepare for a budget cut of one million dollars, which is equivalent to twelve full-time deputy positions. I want to address two critical needs that directly impact the safety and well-being in our county: the Sheriff's Law Enforcement Services Division and the Sheriff's Corrections Division. First, the issue of law enforcement has a direct correlation to public safety. Last year, Jackson County Sheriff's deputies responded to and policed over twenty-six thousand calls for service in every one of the nineteen townships in the county, including the city of Jackson. This ranged from the lowest number of calls to just a couple of hundred in one township to the highest number of calls of over eight thousand in another. In addition, twenty-five percent of these calls for services were in jurisdictions that have their own police agency. This is important to understand because no police agency can do it alone. We depend upon one another for assistance, and it is often the sheriff's office that fills the gaps, however and whenever they may occur. This can be as simple as answering calls for service when they're tied up on another matter, or assisting agencies with complex matters involving specialized units such as our K-9, our detectives, our accident investigators, and reconstructionists. In jurisdictions without their own police agency, we are overwhelmingly the agency relied upon for law enforcement services twenty-four hours a day, every day of the year. Now regarding our county jail, we're the only jail in this county, meaning every agency brings their incarcerated individuals to us. It's no secret that Corrections deputies are the backbone of maintaining order behind those walls. We are already facing staffing shortages that threaten the very operation of the jail. Without enough deputies, we not only risk the safety of staff and inmates, but we could also be forced to close a portion of the jail, which will impact public safety as well. We owe it to the community to maintain a secure, well-staffed facility that ensures justice is upheld. I bring this information to your attention, in part for the benefit of you, but also for those in attendance tonight, and for those watching at home. They need to understand the impact of this millage. This is not about the jail and the underlying arguments of whether or not one should be built. Please don't conflate the two. This is about the people, the people that do this job. It is critical for public safety in Jackson County that this millage pass. Commissioners, thank you for placing this ballot, placing this on the ballot, and not arbitrarily cutting this money from the sheriff's operating budget.
My name is Larry Jacobson. I do know many of you. I've been in law enforcement for Jackson County about twenty-two years now. I've lasted ten in the sheriff's office. I'm also a taxpayer, a citizen of Summit, president of the Jackson County Deputy Sheriff's and Road Patrol Association. But I'm going to call you out a little bit on that no one is saying anything against what's happening. As important as this millage is, as vital as it is to have a strong police presence in a community that has the crime numbers that we have, we are facing a bit of a defund the police moment, highlighted by the chairman's comments when pressed at a recent meeting that maybe it is time that we look at defunding the police. So let's get back to this just a little minute, for just a moment, because we're going to try to piece this thing together. At a recent public meeting, a commissioner told citizens that he voted to have the millage put on the ballot reluctantly, that he wanted the cuts to come right then and there. I haven't confirmed on a second one, but I have that first one. Think about that. Now, depending on your database, Jackson has either the eighth, the seventh, or the fourth most crimes, the most crime-ridden communities in the state. And in this particular case, we're looking at fewer cops on the streets. At another gathering, a commissioner said the sheriff could balance the budget and make up any difference by eliminating school liaison officers at traffic units, cutting take-home cars, and eliminating contract township vehicles and canines. Come on. That is the most misinformed thing I've ever heard in my life, and it's not even remotely true. Those positions are overwhelmingly funded by schools or townships. Traffic cars are funded by state and federal grants. That doesn't come out of the general fund. Take-home cars aren't going to cost anything, and we have one canine unit. It's misinformation being spread by people that should know better. As you said, this is not about us versus them. It's about making sure the people understand. Vote yes, vote yes. Vote no, vote no. Vote your conscience, vote your pocketbook. We all have to do that. If this millage fails, the people that elected all of you are going to have to feel this pinch, and they're going to demand answers. They're going to want to know when they call 911 why the cops aren't coming, and why their waiting time is going to be ballooned to, if not multiple hours, even days for smaller reports. This will indeed seismically shift how we do business. It's more than just about nuts and bolts. This is something that for all of us is going to affect us. We didn't tie the funding of this essential public component to a bill, a millage, or a bond that might one day get paid off. That was something somebody else did. But our citizens, they're the ones that are going to feel it, and they're the ones that are going to want answers. What are we asking for? Nothing. We're asking that somehow we come together, that we kind of eliminate some of the things that have been going on at some of these meetings, and I have their receipts, and get to the bottom of this so that we can move forward. You need to help us fix this, or the citizens of Jackson County, like myself, are going to elect people that will. Thank you for your time.
Well, my name is Corey Abbey. I'm a member of POEM in Jackson County Jail since two thousand and three. I'm here not only to address the board, but also inform the citizens of Jackson County of the impacts cuts will have on the Jackson County Jail. When I began my career, and at the time, it was a career, the county had to limit testing to fifty applicants. The fifty spots filled up fast. The county gave its own civil service test, and I had to show up at least an hour to the county tower building open just to make sure I was on the list to take the test. Today, there are different times. The jail struggles with turnover. This can be attributed to the decision that was made by the board in two thousand and eight, which saw the pension elimination and benefit cuts. The numbers are quite different in terms of retention. In two thousand and three, we had an eighty-five percent retention rate to now in the low thirties. We simply have a hard time attracting qualified candidates when we are competing with other counties around us that pay better, offer better insurance, and better retirement. The Jackson County Jail went from one of the most sought-after places to work to a training and transitional department. The Jackson County Jail has always had to do more with less. The inmate-to-officer ratio is one of the worst in the state of Michigan. Our officers act as medical staff for twelve hours a day, as we are the only jail of our size in the state of Michigan that does not have twenty-four-hour medical coverage. We do not have a classification cadre or a transportation division. We operate at bare minimums. And when an inmate has a medical emergency, we have to call officers at home and hope that they answer their phone just to escort that inmate to the ER. I want to point out a few other jails. The Ingham County Jail has two more beds than Jackson County Jail, yet they have twenty-one more frontline staff. The Monroe County Jail has seventy-nine less beds and eighteen more frontline staff. We are marked down yearly of how grossly understaffed we are and how dangerous it is to operate in this manner by the Michigan Department of Corrections auditors. In my twenty-plus years, we have lost jail officers, not gained. Even though the county population has continued to rise, I would also like to point out that Jackson County was ranked the eighth most dangerous county in the state of Michigan. In my time, no major security upgrade improvement has been approved by this board. The Wesley Street jails continue to deteriorate with Band-Aids and workaround fixes that we undermine safety and security. The board is contemplating cutting position to an already depleted workforce. We urge you to have an actuary staffing analysis completed prior to any cuts being made. The MDLC auditors will complete this upon request and have offered it many times. During COVID, we did not get to work from home. We were deemed essential. We were not allocated any of the ARPA funds in which could have invested security upgrades like other counties utilize funds for. We had neglected and had to fight for workman's compensation when the officer came down from COVID.
Sir, you've run out of time?
COVID housing units. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Joe Strong. I'm the vice president of Corrections Union. I've been with the county for twenty-two years. When I was trying to promote this last millage, the one thing I heard from the public is, "They do not trust you guys." It is time for you guys to get the trust back from the public. If you guys get the trust back from the public, I think we can pass the millage. The ball's in your court. Thank you.
That light needs to be green for everybody who comes up.
Oh, now is that better?
Yep.
Okay. Addressing this board tonight, my position is clear not to defund the county law enforcement agency. I could rant about how detrimental that would potentially be to our community, the community to which you also belong. Communication seems to be the main reason that some of this is occurring. Regarding this situation, to explain why there's not a plan in place, and as Corey said, there was a plan in place, but again, communication is the key. Reviewing the county policies ten thirty and ten ninety, and the associated public acts of six twenty-one and one thirty-six, of course, clearly gives you that ability to fund capital projects. Reviewing the county treasurer's website from July two thousand and twenty-four shows a portfolio of sixty-four million, cash over twenty-seven, and recent CD that matured on August eighteenth, twenty-four, one mil. Can you see why not clearly relaying this information is so vital? Did the county receive the annual distribution from the medical marijuana, which states money allocated under this subdivision must be used exclusively to support the county sheriffs, and must be in addition to, and not in replacement, of other funding received by the county sheriff? Can you see why the voters that I speak with say, "You have the money"? Explain to the people. Communicate the basic fundamentals of your accounting. I can't explain it. I don't know. I look at the website, and I see the same stuff. People feel, and I quote, "That they're being blackmailed, that there was a lack of planning. Operating expenses should be in the general budget, not on a special millage." This lack in talking to the people is creating a distrust which you may never recover from. Talk to the voters. Jackson County strategic plan from May sixth, two thousand and nineteen, commissioners identified communications as a specific area of concern, quoting, "How do we convey what we are doing? How do we message better so people understand our vision? Could better utilize social media? Communication takes time and money. The plan should be revisited." I received today in the mail the plan of the millage for the JCC millage. I thought, "Oh, that way, it'd be a good thing that the commissioners look at, to get the information out there." What Corey said is true, and I appreciate the information, but get it out to the voters. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Joe Finley, a resident of Jackson County, father of two boys, seven and nine. This whole thing with the millage, we already discussed a lot about why it's important and everything. I want to talk about a plan. So to promote a zero-point-two-five millage for the Sheriff's Department of Jackson County, you'll want to run a focused and persuasive campaign to communicate the benefits and necessity of the millage to the community. I put together some steps to potentially help with that promotion. One, community outreach. Public meetings, like this. Host town hall meetings and forums to inform residents about the millage. Invite the sheriff, deputies, and county officials to explain the need for additional funding and what improvements it will bring. Neighborhood canvassing. Organize volunteers to go door-to-door to engage the residents. Provide materials that explain the millage in simple terms. Number two, highlight the benefits. Increase public safety. Explain how the millage will directly improve the department's ability to protect and serve, emphasizing increased police presence and quicker responses to emergencies. Better resources. Illustrate what the funds will be used for: new equipment, more officers, better training, et cetera, et cetera. Local stories. Share real-life examples of how enhanced law enforcement has improved safety in other areas, or even within the county. Social media campaigning. Create informative posts. Use platforms like Facebook, Twitter, Instagram to share the facts, updates, and infographics about the millage. Share videos and testimonies, of course. Hashtag inconsistent messaging. Use memorable hashtags for the campaign to ensure that all messaging is aligned with the core goals of improving safety and service. Number four, leverage local media. Press releases, interviews, and opinion pieces. Press releases, interviews, and opinion pieces are very key point and importance to that. Number five, engage key stakeholders, local businesses, gain the support of the business owners who might benefit from the increased security and safety and to have those maintained. Community groups. Engage the local civic organizations, homeowners associations, and neighborhood watch groups, and of course endorsements. Number six, educate on costs. Explain the financials. Break down the costs in terms of what the residents would pay and make it something that is presentable. And again, add a minimal amount of, you know, make it so it's understandable. And then provide comparisons. Compare the cost of the millage to other common expenses, helping people see that it's reasonable investment for improved safety. And finally, number seven, visual campaigns. Yard signs and banners and infographics are really easy to put together. And by focusing on clear communication, transparency, and engaging various community members, we can all help each other garner support for the 0.25 millage initiative for the Jackson County Sheriff's Department. Thank you for your time.
Good evening. I'm Mike Smythe. I know several of you. Commissioner Walls, thank you for that invocation. And I absolutely agree, we need to bring people together and separate the divide. Commissioner Kennedy, thank you. I really appreciate the facts. Those of you who don't know me, I'm the Superintendent, Western School District. I've been proud to be there 16 years. Thank you for the job you do. It's rather nice to be on this side of the table once in a while and not get the brunt of what you're getting right now. There's no doubt in my mind that the welfare of this county, you all have at your heart. This is a thankless job. You don't sit up there and do this for the big paycheck you get. You do this because you love the county. I just want to share a little anecdote. I've been in education 35 years, been an administrator almost 30. I have almost half of that been the Superintendent, Western School District. Unfortunately, I've seen budgets where I've had to cut $1 million a year. It is not easy. I've been there, done that. Fortunately, I don't have law enforcement to worry about and to keep on the streets. We unfortunately had a situation this week at Western, some of you may have heard about it, where we got a okay to say threat at 3:30 a.m. Monday morning. When my phone goes off and it's my resource deputy, it's never a good thing when it's after 7:00 or before 7:00 a.m. And phone goes off, and if it weren't for road patrol to be on call, take that call from 911, convey the message to Deputy Warner so we could investigate the situation, we would have had to close school and not, not know for how long. By the way, it was a fraudulent threat, and the threat was not targeted at Western, Western School District, thank God. It was targeted at West Middle School, somewhere, who knows where. But as a school official, we are very supportive of law enforcement. We have a great relationship with the Sheriff's Department. We will continue to pay for a resource officer, if not two. But I just worry what cutting road patrol does. I get it, folks. And I'll do whatever I can for you and for all the people in the back. I will do whatever I can to help campaign for this because I think it's a necessity. I don't think it's the time to point finger at you all. I think you're doing a great job. I do. 51 million plus budget? I get it. I get it. I operate a $33 million budget. So I just want to say thank you for what you do and think hard and strong on how we can get creative about moving funds around. And if there's anything I can do personally, let me know. I would be happy to help out and campaign as hard as I can for this millage. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Kelsey Guernsey. Most of you know, come January 2nd, I will be Jackson County's next county prosecutor. I had planned a thing to say so I could stay on topic, but, but really a lot of it, you guys already know, and I know you know that, right? You know the importance of law enforcement. And I know that none of you, because I've talked to most of you, are sitting up here looking for ways to make cuts. That's, that's not what any of us want to do. And so I wanted to echo some of that, of the other things of what can we do to try to make this a successful millage? Because that's really where we are. Nobody wants to cut any jail depths. I know that, you guys know that. So my challenge to all of us, because I don't have any of the magic wands. I, I've just gotten off of a campaign that worked well for me, but, but I don't know. I don't know what the magic wands are. But I echo what Superintendent Smythe just said of, you know, getting out there. What can we do to get out there? Somebody else said knocking on doors. I knocked on a lot of doors lately. Knocking on doors makes a difference. And so my challenge to, to all of you, because you guys have a big, big pool of people and everybody's sitting out here as well, is what can all of us do? We've got seven weeks. What can all of us do in the next seven weeks to try to make sure this millage passes? Because that's where we are. I've seen that budget that Commissioner Kennedy showed. That's, that's where we're at. This, this millage has to pass. There's really not any other choices, given the numbers and the predicament that we're in. So my challenge and my request is what can everybody in this room do for the next seven weeks? And count me in on what I can do that's helpful. Thank you.
I'm Michael Hurst. I live in Jackson County. I just want to say, you know, I have complete confidence. I know most of the people on this board personally. I have complete confidence in this board. I have complete confidence. I have complete confidence in law enforcement who sits over there. I don't have so much confidence in the voters right now. And I think it's, it's, it's a situation where we get 20% of the people come out to vote. It wins by, it loses by a narrow margin. That's barely a victory and hardly a mandate. So I echo what, what Mike Smythe said tonight, tonight and, and Corey and our new prosecutor. You know, the, the people this is going to hurt is, is the poor. It's not going to hurt the Mike Hurst of the world by removing night patrols, but it's going to give people in high crime neighborhoods, it's going to hurt them. It's going to give anybody who wants to drink and drive, go out and get loaded and, and drive their car, an open ticket because they know there'll be no police out that night. You know, these are important issues. And, and I, and I got to get on my voters in this community, that's for sure. And I'm going to tell them this. You know, I've never spoken less than three minutes, so I'm making this short and sweet. I want to just give everybody something to think about a little bit. Put this in perspective a little bit. Got some great law enforcement people sitting over here. Some of them got kids at home, some of them got wives at home, some of them got pregnant wives at home. Great people risk their life all the time. And I'm going to tell you right now, somebody comes through that door, semi-automatic weapons, hell bent on killing everybody in here. There's a bunch of people who are there that can step between you and that gunman. And they're going to risk their lives. And some of them will die. So I guess my call to the voters is, hey, what's that worth to you? What's that worth to you that you can go home to your family and your children because they risked their lives? You think about that a little bit. Think about that long and hard, as a matter of fact. What's that worth to you? So that's all I want to say tonight, and I'm, I'm with Mike, I'm with Kelsey. Anything you want me to do personally, I'll spend whatever amount of time you want me to spend on this, helping this happen. But we got to get to the voters. It's not the board's fault, and I'm, I'm with Corey on one other thing. I have no idea how many time I have here. I'm with Corey on one other thing. We can't go back and start, oh, this guy did this, this guy did that. That's, that's, that's wasted energy. That's water under the bridge. All we want to do is move forward here, from here. Put our heads together and do something. Do something for the people of this community. Thank you very much.
John Wilson, City of Jackson, 1045 South Tran Street. I will be voting yes on this upcoming 0.25 millage. And I'm voting yes for the sheriff and the sheriff's department, all the staff. I'm not voting yes because of you. This board oversees a 50, 51 million dollar budget. Fiscal year 24, 25, you have a $9 million budget surplus. These are reserves, unspent. Commissioner Williams stated a couple of weeks ago during a public safety meeting that, I will quote, "We can't pull from essentially our savings account to fix a one-year problem." You have a $9 million savings account. Next fiscal year, it's projected to go up a million, so that'll be over 10 million. And yet, you are threatening, if this millage doesn't pass, to defund the police. Yes, you are threatening to defund the police. I invite, if Mr. Overton, after the meeting, I don't invite, maybe Mr. Overton can invite everyone down to the second floor county tower ballroom. That opulent, beautiful, magnificent ballroom. That, none of us know how much money was spent to make that into a ballroom. I've never been able to find it anywhere in the budget. You found plenty of money to build this ballroom, and it is very nice. Needed? No, it's not. But we have it. You will soon have a multimillion dollar new farmer's market. Now, of course, that money, or that farmer's market isn't being built from money from the general fund. You'll get grants for it and so forth, but you also have to take money out of that general fund to match those grants, just like you do on road projects.
30 seconds.
So you do take money out of the general fund for grant matches. Okay, thank you. And again, I do support the 0.25 millage, and I'm sure this one's going to pass. Thank you.
I have no idea how to do this. Okay. My name is Jo Beth Carlton. I was not going to speak tonight. This is my first time ever at one of these meetings. I'm telling you right now, I am not used to people actually being able to speak for three minutes without being interrupted. I run the Facebook group for Rives, one of two. I also write the Only Community Newsletter. And I've lived in the area for about four and a half years. And I'm telling you right now, we, we in Rives cannot actually afford to not have this coverage. We cannot afford to not have these police officers taken care of. There's an officer in this room actually tonight, a deputy, who has responded multiple times to calls about me actually from our township board that were completely fabricated stories. I had done nothing wrong because I have been a target of harassment. And I'm not really big into the whole police thing, but for the first time in my life, I started meeting deputies who are so caring and so honest and genuinely want to do the right thing and are not abusing their authority whatsoever. I used to live in Hamtramck. I'm used to a much different situation. I've heard a lot of people come up here and talk about how everyone needs to get together and campaign for this. Over the last few months, the sheriff actually gave a friend and I a tour of the jail. He's been available to answer thousands of questions at this point. Deputies have been available. We actually just had four people in law enforcement just show up at our meeting last week, and not only did they do public comment, they answered every single question they possibly could, but they stayed for the entire meeting. On the other side, our county commissioner in Rives has shown up at meetings and has talked for literally over 33 minutes straight and then could not answer questions when everyone in the room had questions. In Rives, people don't trust you guys, and it's because of our commissioner not being able to answer questions. But when it comes to those answers, we get them from these officers. We get them from the sheriff. Actually, the undersheriff was kind enough to send a deputy out last year for a meeting when we were having a lot of turmoil in Rives. And that evening, someone on our plan commission started approaching one of our board members very aggressively, and we were lucky that we had a deputy there to escort that man to his car, because who knows what would have happened? We don't have a police force. We're out in the middle of nowhere, and it's very tense out in Rives.
30 seconds, ma'am.
Thanks. It's just wild. I mean, like, you guys are doing a great job up here tonight, but when it comes to answering people's questions, I really hope you do answer them tonight, as many as you can, because I know when this comes up in Rives, everyone demands answers and we don't get them unless we are lucky enough to have one of these officers there that night answering those questions. Thanks.
My name is James Minnick, and I'm from Columbia Township. I'm also six years clean and sober. And as everybody knows, it's common knowledge that there is a countrywide drug problem, homeless problem, mental addiction problem. A lot of this is being handled by the police because there's just not enough resources to take care of these people. And in most cases, they're committing a crime as a secondary effect of being high, looking for money, doing drugs, or as winter comes up, it's going to get cold. These people are going to look for places to sleep. They're going to look for things to, to fence off so that they can make a quick dollar. They're not going to go away, they're only going to multiply. These drugs are coming across our border. This is a concerted effort. Jackson is, is a little more worse than some of the other places, and I'm not putting this on any, any official or any past event. And I take a lot of responsibility for, for how our society is today. But having said that, we need help. And we don't, a lot of these people don't need to be locked up, but initially, they are going to have to be approached by officers who are powerful men, who can take care of, misguided mental people. We need more cops right now than we ever have. The resources that we are putting money to, and I'm not afraid to say, you know, some of these, some of these do-gooder psychologists and, and social, social nonprofits that think they're helping us in the recovery community, a lot of them ain't doing us no favors. They're just guaranteed that their budgets get guaranteed in the next year. That's all I'll say about that. Right now, we, I need cops. I need police officers, and I need strong people. We're going to get overwhelmed. There's not enough beds to throw these people in jail. We're going to have to come up with Plan Bs. But in the meantime, I need, we need more cops on the ground. We need, we need more police officers, we need more deterrents. And I got a lot of ideas for that. But right now, we need, we need a lot more, a lot more cops.
Good evening. Christy Davis, I live on Fourth Street in the Fifth Ward, just not too far from the awesome Sheriff's Department. I am running for city council, so I've been trying to follow as much stuff as I can. The National Sheriff's Foundation originally states their duties include keeping the peace, monitoring jails, arresting fugitives, maintaining a list of wanted criminals, which is incredibly necessary right now. Early American sheriff, important to the security of people, and was granted much power. I 1,000% stand behind our sheriffs and police departments. We certainly need to have stuff fixed as much as possible. I do have a couple of questions that I would love to get answers to. I'm wondering, from the website that I read, the Sheriff's Department was built in 1953. For those of us that are homeowners, we save for house repairs, vacations, retirements, and whatnot. I am wondering why there has not been some financial stuff set aside every year, you know, from extra, a surplus of money or from other millages or just extra money, you know, put in to be able to do these much-needed corrections? And perhaps we need to look into getting some financial planners? We've got quite a few in Jackson on some commissions to help plan for that. I know there are other law enforcement agencies in Jackson. We've got the ATF and the State Troopers that also utilize the jail, I believe, not 1,000% certain, but I believe they do. I'm wondering if there's any federal money that we can apply for to get this or state money, since we have State Troopers? Wondering if there's a rainy day fund for the county? I read through the budget today, I didn't see anything. I read through the budget today, I didn't see anything, but I'm not a massive budget person, so who knows? I'm wondering why we have so many other millages. I don't know who controls putting millages on the ballots and stuff, but I'm wondering why we have so many other things, like the library and all the other ones that are on there all the time, when this is just, this is so much more important. I feel highly that law enforcement is the linchpin of society. With crime rates going up, we have more and more distracted drivers with our cell phones, we all do it, we know we do. We need to keep as many officers as we can on the streets and have them in a-
Twenty seconds, ma'am.
Thank you. And have them in a work, in a safe work environment. I as well have toured the jail. It is horrible. I can't believe that any of them work there. I also want to point out, Eaton is currently on strike, our teachers' strike and our nurses' strike. Imagine if these gentlemen and women in the back of the room all decided to strike.
You're out of time, ma'am.
Thank you very much.
I'm Mary Walcott from Grass Lake Township. I guess a lot of people that I talk to, they say, "Oh, we don't want our taxes going up," or, you know, "We pay too much taxes now." So if a person has a $150,000 taxable value, that would cost them $37 for the year. So the library, that's about what mine is, so I've gone by that. So the library would be $220. I'd much rather have it reversed, have the, you know what I mean? $37 for the police and $220 for the library? I mean, if, if you kind of tell people, "This is all it's going to cost you, and this is how, how important it is," that's what I've been doing anyways, trying to say, you know, "This is all it's going to cost you, and all these other things, look how much they cost you." So I figured on my tax bill, this police millage would be, I calculated, .0084, or eight tenths of a percent of the whole tax bill. So I think a good thing to do would be to explain to people, "This is all it's going to cost you, and this is what it's going to do for you." Anyway, that's my thought.
I'm Fred Trexler, Precinct Delegate in Summit Township. I'm, a question I have is, why does the Sheriff's Department have to have a millage to pay for operating expenses? Why couldn't that be built into the county millage and as part of the county budget? I don't think I've ever voted for Summit Township operating budget. It just appears on my tax bill, and the county operating budget is part of the tax bill too. Why doesn't, why can't you build the operating expense for the jail into the county budget so that it's not a millage that people have to vote on?
Hi, I'm Michelle. I'm not, never done this. I'm just confused. A wise, wise man once said, "You should never lose control of your money. You should bet, always budget your household, take care of your family." What it feels like is this community is letting go of the family. I was a single mom, foreclosed home, the whole nine yards, but I bought another house, raised my two children, sent my daughter to college, and I lived. I survived on a budget. I think if you guys were wisely running this, it wouldn't be in this state, and that's my personal opinion. I don't know Adam from Eve, but I'm confused on this part. You guys said, or the mayor said, that you were going to build and put up these street signs and do all this so new business came in, right? You built all the, you did all the work with the streets and did the circles and the roundabouts. Okay, so you guys did that to bring in new business, which would bring in more taxes, right? So I'm confused. If we did that, and then we're going to defund the police, businesses aren't going to come here. So what was the point of doing all that fancy building stuff? Do you understand? It doesn't make sense to me. Those are actions I need to understand. None of that makes sense. My next question is, you're going to change the law? Nobody's going to get put in prison for misdemeanors or anything? What about mothers who need money? You're not going to collect friend-of-the-court money? Or put fathers or mothers that need to pay those bills? I mean, really? And not only that, but two years ago, I went to lunch on Cooper Street, and then met the police and the, the bad people are out shooting all over at 12 o'clock in the afternoon. You know what? What happens if that happens at night? I mean, I, this is not logical to me. And you guys all keep your houses correct, your finances in order? Why aren't ours? There are counties and there are states that do balance their budgets.
Thirty minutes, seconds, ma'am. Ma'am, Michelle, I need your last name, please.
Hello. My name is Stacy Brejack. I've been in this community for over 50 years. We have ran a successful business downtown for over 75 years. We had to leave downtown Jackson because it got too expensive, the taxes, the water, the lights, the, the, all of the things that we had to do for the signage and all of that. We had to leave. Now we're in Summit Township. Our alarm head went off twice. The only people that came would be the Sheriff's Department. The city is five minutes away, not even five minutes. Did the city come? No. The sheriff came twice when my alarms went off. I don't see how this, I haven't really deep-dived into the budgets. I am a single mom, and I ran, like I said, a successful business for many, many years. And if I can go within my budget and I don't make much, I'm pretty sure y'all can go in the budget. Now, like I said, I haven't done a lot of, of deep diving into this. This was just kind of brought to my attention because I kind of tried to stay away from politics because it got too much downtown. That's why I had to leave. We had to leave, move our business out. I really think that you should consider some more maybe budget-friendly avenues. The Sheriff's Department, in my eyes, is extremely important. It states in here, "Your mission statement is for safety." Who is going to come to my safety? Who's coming to my, I also live in Rives Junction. Who's coming to my safety? It's going to be my nine mil. That's the only thing I got going. It's going to be my nine mil or my Glock, because I don't, I'm not going to see anyone you coming to my help. So I really would like, I'm going to do a little bit more deep diving into the budget, and like I said, I've had the business, the Catholic shop, for over 75 years. I have watched over and over the lack of spending, I mean, the-
Thirty seconds.
Waste of spending, over and over. So I think we can find a budget to help the Sheriff's Department for my safety and everybody else.
My name's Norm Gield, G-U-I-L-D. And I've only been a resident of Jackson for a couple of years, but we spend an awful lot of money on property taxes, and it really kind of troubles me to think that, I couldn't see the graph this, this gentleman was holding up. But in my mind, it's a matter of priorities. Rather than bump it up where I have to spend a couple, you know, $30, $50, whatever it is, per year, more in taxes to pay for the police, why aren't you putting a priority on the value of what those people contribute to the, to the county? And give them a benefit package. Bring them into the 21st century. You know, I would say double that and give them health insurance, give them a pension All you're telling me is there's no value placed on these people, and what they do is something that I wouldn't want to do, and I'm grateful for them for doing it.
Good evening. I'm Ted Ludlow, and I've been in the Jackson community for a long time, too. I live in Columbia Township, and I've been a part of the Jackson Catholic Schools for years, and I'd like to just speak on behalf of the Sheriff's Department in gratitude for all they do for us and in support of this millage. It's really important. The Jackson Catholic Schools, last weekend, as a matter of fact, had an incident where the Sheriff's Department had to come and clear the grounds at a football game and make sure everyone was safe. It was a, it wasn't an incident, but they came, and they came in support, and we're really grateful for everything they do for us. We're grateful for this committee, too, for the, for the Township Commission, and for all the work that you guys, or the, the county commission, and all the work that you guys do. But we really have to get our community together, and we're running out of time. And the thing that bothers me the most is that we have such a short lead time now to turn this issue around and to get the money for our, for our Sheriff's Department. And, you know, like everyone else has said, we're standing in support. We will, as an organization, I will, as an individual, and the people around me stand in support of this millage. So what we need to do, and I'm also on the, on the Chamber of Commerce Board, and on that board, we talked about it this morning in our meeting, and everyone there supports this, too. We need to get the word out, and we need to make sure people know the importance of it and that the real cost and what they look like, and, you know, we're all here to help with that, so let us know what we can do. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Public comment is now closed. We have a special meeting of the Standing Committee of Public Safety and Transportation, chaired by Vice Chairman Corey Kennedy, Commissioner Kennedy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is a bit unusual to be holding a committee meeting, special committee meeting. It's in regards to a request on a grant program from the Circuit Court. I believe all the commissioners have had a chance to study it, and Charles is here to present it to us for the first time publicly.
Yes, sir, and everyone on the board, good evening. As many of you know, the Community Corrections Program that we currently have, and it's funded 100% through this, a state grant. How's that? This Community Corrections Grant has been part of our community for 31 years. It has been operated by a number of different departments, from the Sheriff's Department, District Court, and then Circuit Court took it over about seven years ago. During that whole time, we've been using independent contractor positions for performance of the duties performed under that grant. The purpose of the grant is to help divert our jail population, who are nonviolent, into programming, and it's called pre-trial services, and it helps to reduce the use of jail beds as well as prison beds. But with some of the challenges that we had with changes in labor law and those kinds of things, using independent contractors have caused a review by county administration, court administration, our HR department, which I want to thank both county administration and HR for all the work they did in helping us look at alternatives to the use of independent contractors. In the end, we ended up choosing to go the route of asking for the creation of two FTEs for that office, which are 100% grant-funded. There's no county match to that. You know, the, the amount of the grant for the fiscal year 2025, which starts October 1st, is a little over $304,000. So that's the purpose of, but, you know, the timing, unfortunately, best efforts, we were relying on getting information from comparable counties. It just didn't line up with the timing that we needed, and that's why we're here, and we appreciate you entertaining our requests.
Okay. Committee members, I'm looking for a motion to forward this to the full board. If we get that, then we can have some discussion. Move by Duckham?
Support.
Supported by Williams. Is there any discussion? Commissioner Baer.
Thank you, Chairman Kennedy. I always worked, my employment was always in the private sector, not the public sector, and it still amazes me the difference between what's expected of private-sector employees and public-sector employees. I got to read this stuff starting Saturday. Here we are Tuesday, and we're expected to take action on it. If I went to my boss and said, "I need immediate action on this." The IT, or the HR department didn't get me the answers I needed, so that's, so they are why I'm late. My boss would have chewed me a new, and he would have done it at the next department managers' meeting, and he would have tried his best to embarrass me in front of all the other department managers about my timing, my making excuse for other people. I've gotten this too many times from different county department heads. To me, there's no excuse for this. You knew what was needed, like every other department head knows what is needed. You should know how much time it takes. It, to me, it's offensive to come at the last minute and say, "Oh, you got to approve this." Well, maybe I don't. Second point is, you say the grant covers all of the wages and fringe benefits. Does it cover the new computers these employees will need? Does it cover the, the desk, the chair, the IT help, the, the phone that they will be issued? Is all of that covered in the grant?
All of those already exist there.
They already exist?
This is not a new department. It's existed for 31 years.
Okay. On Article III Analysis, the lower part of B, I'm confused by the, what's presented here. We have a grant manager administrator, then we have a grant administrator manager. So the grant manager administrator is getting a $91,000 salary. The pre-trial supervisor is getting an $85,000 salary. The grant administrator manager, $80,000 salary, and the pre-trial supervisor administration salary, $50,000. That sounds like four employees to me. You're asking for two full-time employees? What am, what am I misinterpreting out of these two paragraphs?
Well, each position is subdivided into salary and to benefits. So I, I guess I'm losing some of the question-
Okay, well, if you can turn to the third page- Well, if you can turn to the third page of your letter.
Third or second?
Third page, under Article Three Analysis.
Okay.
Bullet Point B, Finance. And then below that, you've got Community Corrections Grant Reimbursement Fund. So in the community, in the Community Corrections Grant, we've got, it looks like two employees. You've got the grant administrator administrator, $91,000 salary. And then, looks to me, a different person. Because what's the difference between the manager administrator and the administrator manager?
Well, each one are two different topics. One, the first one that says grant manager administrator is the amount under the grant that is approved by the state for that position. But it's coming from, there's different, the grant's very complicated. But to fund these positions, we had to get permission to move some of the money within the grant. For the pretrial services assessment program that is done to determine the appropriateness of that person into the position, and the supervision of the program to monitor their behavior, because they can be put on tether, GPS, because the goal is to provide them services, but to get them out of detention, i.e. jail. So the total 192 and change is the total of the grant that's approved for the funding for those two FTEs. The total at the bottom, or the second part, the 188, 195, 11, is what the total package has been determined to be for that position by the county. So we're within the allotted budget for those two positions. So in other words, it's fully funded. So they're not four positions, it's just.
Charles, if I may, I think I can explain in a little simpler terms.
Okay.
If you don't mind.
Sure.
Okay. The top section amount is the amount available from the grant. That's the Community Corrections Grant reimbursement funding. The bottom amount is to show the cost. So it's not, it's not two separate amounts, per se, so it's not 192,000 and then an additional 188. Does that make sense?
When you explain it, yes.
Okay.
What's presented here is not clear.
I understand, Commissioner Baer. That's why I'm explaining that. Do you have any other questions to the motion? Because we need to forward this to the full board, and also I have a noncommittee member, I believe.
Go for it.
First, I'll go with committee member, Commissioner Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So just a couple of quick questions for you. So, because there's a couple of statements made, I just want to make sure that it's clear for the public. So prior to bringing this to us today, there were certain permissions needed before you could bring those, right?
Yes, because we were looking at having to, while we had to have the positions, the job descriptions approved by HR.
Right.
They had to be pointed using, you know, the county's pointing system for that position. Place them within the payroll structure that the county uses, but we also compared those to five or six other counties, which are comparables that we use for these kinds of things to make sure that we were in line with.
So once all the homework was done and all of the permissions were granted, you brought those here, so it was not a negligence of your office, but just things are happen as they come?
And I want to express that a lot of work was done.
Sure.
By the HR. But when you reach out to other departments and other counties.
Yeah.
Your requests aren't always their top priority.
Yeah. So I just wanted just to make that, make sure that part was clear.
Yeah, it wasn't a neglectful.
Yeah.
On any part of county administration, we were all working together to work through what it was we needed to do, so to benefit both the county and to protect the county.
Thank you, and I appreciate that, because you spelled it out here pretty well for me in your report. And then my last question is, I think you mentioned that there's no match dollars needed for this, correct?
No, sir. No, there's never been in the 31 years that we've had that, and it benefits a lot of people.
Yes, I just wanted to just make sure those points were clear before we voted. Thank you.
No, I think if the grant, if the grant funding went away, the positions go away.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, nothing further.
Thank you, Commissioner Williams. Commissioner Snell, did you have anything?
No, I'm just laying you down.
Got you. You're getting my attention. Appreciate that. Okay, if there's no other discussion that needs to take place, I'm going to take a roll call vote of the committee, just the committee members, to forward to the full board.
All right. Commissioner Walls. Commissioner Duckham.
Yes.
Commissioner Williams.
Yes.
Commissioner Baer.
No.
Chairman Kennedy.
Yes.
Passes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. That concludes the special meeting, and I believe that item would now go under consent? Or am I correct in that?
No, sir. It's going to move to a Standing Committee Report of Public Safety and Transportation. So you get another crack at it, sir.
Oh, wonderful. Thank you. That concludes the special meeting, at least.
Thank you, sir. Entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the August 20th meeting.
So moved.
Support. Have a motion and support. Questions to the minutes. Seeing nor hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. We've arrived at the consent agenda. Entertain a motion for the consent agenda. Have a motion and support. Any questions or items that need to be pulled from the consent agenda? Madam Clerk, when you're ready, you may post the vote.
It is posted.
We have a delay, Commissioner Walls. Are you in the a or nay?
Yay.
Thank you, ma'am.
Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask an unrelated question?
Commissioner Baer.
The chart that showed all of the funding, they couldn't read it from back there. Can that chart just be made available now, so people can have an opportunity to look at it? Thank you.
Standing Committee, Public Safety and Transportation, chaired by Vice Chairman, Commissioner Kennedy. Commissioner Kennedy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Once again, first item will be A, it's appointments. It is the same old store we've had for the last two months. It's an emergency management advisory council position. It's a commissioner position. Commissioner Snell held it. He has a scheduling conflict and had to resign. Commissioner Walls has looked into it. She has a scheduling conflict. I've looked into it. I have a scheduling conflict. We're still looking for a commissioner that will be able to fulfill that role. If any of you do, please contact me. You can call me, text me, email me. The next is Item B, which is the item we just discussed. And I don't think any further.
Entertain a motion?
Move to adopt the committee recommendation.
We have a motion to adopt, and I heard a second?
Yep.
Okay. Any questions? Seeing nor hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries eight, one. Thank you, Mr. Kennedy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Standing Committee, General Government, chaired by Commissioner Phil Duckham. Commissioner Duckham.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have no business to conduct tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Standing Committee, Human Services, chaired by Commissioner Poleski. Commissioner Poleski.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have appointments, and there are two open positions on the Sanitary Code Board of Appeals. One for a contractor alternate, the other for a well driller alternate. Those positions are currently vacant, and as yet, we have had no applicants.
We shall advertise again, sir.
I, yes, I hope we can achieve some applicants. We also have an opening for a public member on the Department on Aging Advisory Council. That position is vacant. Its term expires December of 2025. Regrettably, we have had no applicants for that either. That is something that I think many people would find to be quite interesting to be on, and so I would encourage anyone to apply, but as yet, Mr. Chair, we have had no applicants.
Any further business to conduct?
That does it for me tonight, sir. Thank you.
We have no unfinished business to come before the board. Under new business, we have a finance item, the 2025 Health Department Budget, and friend of the court budget approval. I have a motion?
Support.
I have a support?
I apologize.
Snell, Williams.
Thank you.
Questions?
Discussion, if I may?
Yes, sir.
Just want to point out, we're voting on these because these are both at the state minimum. Am I correct on that? Is that why we're going forward with this, these budget items?
Were required by state law to pass them at this meeting, and that's correct. They are set at the state minimum level, sir.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Baer.
Can you inform me and the public, how many, how much general fund money goes into these two budgets?
Administrator Overton?
Now, that is, let me turn this on. To be clear, the Health Department, $219,701 will be transferred from general fund to that Health Department. That is the minimum required. We are mandated by the state to have a Health Department, and that is the minimal service level we can give them. So we can't really reduce it smaller and not be in violation with the state. Just to add in, we used to fund them significantly more. Over the last, so say, you know, five years or so, we've reduced their budget down. At one point, we cut 500,000 out of their budget. So they are down to the bare minimum that the state will allow us to pay, to support them. I wish we had more, but we do not. And then the Child Care Fund, to be clear there, that is 805,012 there. One thing I would say about Child Care Fund that people do not realize is, we don't really have any control over that. If, oh, did I say friend of the court? No, friend of the court.
Yeah.
All right, then never mind, it's not friend of the court. And friend of the court, again, is mandated, too. The friend of the court, we contribute one-third of the cost of the friend of the court. So if you cut a dollar of the friend of the court, you cut three dollars of service, because two of them come from the state. We can't pull those two dollars down unless we put our dollar in. And that is what it required, is required with the friend of the court. And that is, again, you know, I wouldn't say it's at the minimum, because we could probably reduce it, but you know who gets hurt when we reduce the friend of the court is all the people who are expecting a timely transaction for childcare and things like that. It's the children ultimately that are harmed there. And we, that would be something that we would try to avoid to cut, frankly, because it's funded two-thirds by the state. It's hard to just give up that kind of money. Thank you.
Can I ask a question? So it'd be accurate to say for every dollar we cut from that department, the state would reduce two dollars that they give to the fund? Thank you.
Any further questions? Madam Clerk, would you please post?
It has been posted. Passes unanimously.
We've arrived at the second opportunity for public comment, public comment guidelines. Each individual will state their name and have two minutes to address the board. You may only address the board once under this public comment opportunity and may not yield your time to others. Board members will not debate nor answer questions at this time.
Rosemary Tanner again. I appreciate what you all are facing. I will be voting yes for the millage. I will do whatever I can do to help. If there's a task force, if there's something that we can do to bring this community together to help get the message out of what the situation is. We have such apathetic voters in this community, having worked on multiple campaigns, and getting people to realize until it actually is pinching them, they don't really care. So whatever we can do, I have resources, we have people, we just need to come together with guidance from the people who manage the money to how can the boots on the ground help you. We, as a community, definitely need to come together. Thank you.
Sue McCrelly, Summit Township, Precinct Three. There was a young father who spoke earlier with two young sons, and he talked about the ask for the operational millage for the Sheriff's Department as an additional millage. I would suggest that in anything that we put out, we emphasize that this was a millage that was in existence for, I'm sorry, was it 20 years? For 20 years. So you're not asking for an additional millage, you're asking for a renewal. I got a flyer from JDL Jackson District Library today in my mail about their 1.7411 renewal request. And in bold type, it said, this is a renewal. So it's not an additional one, it's a renewal. I find that people that I talk to are more willing to support continuing to pay something they've been paying, but the budgets are tight personally, and they don't want to spend more. So that's just my suggestion. Thank you.
Any further public comment? Any further public comment? Public comment is now closed. We're at Commissioner comments. Any Commissioner comments? Commissioner Baer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Some people have asked, you know, what can we do to help get this millage passed? First thing is title it correctly. Some people still say, whether they're just stuck on the word or intentional, they're still calling it a public safety millage. It is not. Please do not use those words. This is a jail operations millage. It's a different game. So talk to people about this millage, how much it is needed. This can be done at the schools, too. You can pass out things or talk to the kids at school about how this millage is necessary. We've got to get the word out. Brad Hawley has a radio show in the morning. There's time for people to call in and talk, make their comments. Let's flood that radio station with people calling in and saying, support this jail operations millage. My worry is we're not getting enough word out to enough people. That's why I've received phone calls from people that say the millage language wasn't written right, because it doesn't talk about the crack repair and the pipe replacement. There's no crack repair, no pipe replacement. This is strictly operations, no construction. So a lot of people out there have the wrong idea. They're spreading the wrong stories, either foolishly or, I hope, not intentionally. We need to educate the people. We need to tell the people this is a very low dollar request, a 0.25. Well, the medical care facility and the. While the medical care facility and the animal control have the same level of millage, they're not up for renewal. But you look at the senior services, parks, lifeways, they're not up for renewal right now, but they are double what this jail operations millage request is. The library millage that's up for renewal is seven times the cost of this jail operations millage. So one of the people said, you know, "Vote your pocketbook." If you've got a big enough pocketbook to vote a 1.74 mill, to me, in my mind, you've got a big enough pocketbook to vote a 0.25 millage. So don't tell me it's an economic issue, that's why you're voting against it. Because then you'd be voting against everything else that's going to come up for renewal. So this is a very low-cost request. The timeframe for getting people educated, what is it, two, three weeks? The absentee ballots are coming out? So we've got two, three weeks to educate people. After that, people are going to be already voting on their absentee ballots. So we don't have till early November to get the word out. We've got two weeks. That's going to take a lot of effort. Personally, I don't even want to discuss where cuts would be made. My emphasis is, where are we going to get more money? I'm not going to vote for any cuts. I came up with one suggestion on where we could get more money. Ended up, my suggestion wasn't workable. Federal grant money would have to be given back. The land would have to be returned to the original owner because of a deed restriction. So my idea wasn't really workable. But I came up with an idea. I'm asking all the other eight commissioners, administrator, deputy administrator, come up with ideas. Where are we going to get more money? I'm still working on ideas to bring in additional revenue. I'll be presenting some of those. So I'm not willing to cut one penny out of the existing budget. I will vote no on the total budget if one penny is removed out of this. That's where I stand. Thank you.
Any other Commissioner comments? Commissioner Duckham?
I was going to speak tonight, and I decided I just better not. Thank you.
Anything, other commissioners? Commissioner Kennedy?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to thank everyone that stood up tonight and wants to be a part of this and supporting it. Positive energy is what we need, not negative. Negative energy will always drag people down. It's about talking about moving forward, what this will provide for the community, and that it's a nominal cost when you consider what it's going to provide. So all the individuals that stepped up, I thank you very much. If you have time, I'd be happy to take your emails down, and maybe we could set up, we'd have to get it cracking real quick, to where we could all meet and come up with some ideas as to how we can get the message out to the most amount of people to get a positive message out on this millage request. Thank you.
Commissioner Williams?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I'll be very brief. The, I think one of the things that I noticed tonight in the, most of the conversation from constituents essentially is, they're speaking the same things that we are. We don't want to see any cuts. We want to continue to support our Sheriff's Department. And so I just want to thank fellow commissioners that are continuing to share that message and sharing the appropriate and correct information. Thank you, Commissioner Kennedy, for your report on today. You eloquently put out exactly what we can do, what we can't do, and what that would, how that affects the counties. That helps us in messaging. And speaking of messaging, I think it was last month, I asked for the possibility of being able to create some type of graphic of sorts. I hope that we can do that and even be able to mail a route of sorts. I don't know if we have a budgeted item line for anything like that. I'm not sure. I'd have to look into it. But if we can, I think that that would be a good use of such dollars, advertising, marketing, so that we can be sure that we are educating the community on the need for this millage as we continue to move forward. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have nothing further.
Commissioner Polesky?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I was pleased to see the county, you know, pitch up. We spent, I don't know, $50,000 or $60,000 in an information campaign for the August millage. And we had a small advocacy committee that put together some mailings and signs. The signs still say, "Vote yes for public safety." Since we've already paid for those signs, and that committee is still scratching up enough money to pay its final bills, I submit those signs are going to have to do, okay, that say yes for public safety. And we have those available in case anyone would like to put them up. And I appreciate everyone who has made a comment tonight. Let's try and get it done in November. Thank you.
Any other Commissioner comments? Any other Commissioner comments? Entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
We have a motion and support. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Duly carried.